And can we have the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you have the roll call, please?
Mr. Huffman.
Here.
Ms. Noah.
Here.
Mr. Schaefer.
Here.
Mr. Seaword.
Here.
Ms. Dixon.
Here.
Mr. Sowers.
Here.
And Mr. Good.
Here.
Do we have anything to add or delete from the agenda? Anything at the last minute? Okay, if not, we will follow the agenda that has been distributed to us. We have the minutes from our January 12th, 2022 meeting. No, wait a minute. This should be February.
February 16th.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, okay. We have the minutes of our February 16th meeting. Any questions? Any additions or corrections to those minutes?
I move the minutes be accepted as presented.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 By a post. Okay, we don't have anyone signed up to speak under the general citizen comments. We do have the public hearings and, of course, we will have some comments when we get to those. Okay, we do have three matters that are advertised for a public hearing for this evening. And before we actually get into discussion of those matters, let me just say that the Planning Commission makes recommendations to the town council. We do not have a final vote, but we do make a recommendation on each of these public hearing matters. We make a recommendation to the council that they will take these up at their meeting next month in April. On the special use permits, we can recommend that they be approved or that they be denied. But again, it's up to the council to have that final decision. Okay, the first one we have is for a special use permit from Conrad Koby to operate a distillery at 622 West Main. Property is owned Business B1. We do have a provision in the town code under section 406.2. This is in the artisan manufacturing area that covers a number of uses, and one of those is distilleries. In that regulation, the site is limited to 4,000 square feet in the building, and the building in question has about 3,600 feet. Okay, we will hear from the applicant any considerations that he wants to present to us. And then later, then we'll move into the public hearing.
Evening, everyone. Just, I believe we met last week at the place. I showed you guys around. Everyone that could make it, unfortunately, you couldn't. Maybe next time, hopefully later. With that, the parking, we have moved forward with the caverns. We're just getting the insurance worked out, but they're going to have a one-year lease for parking at the building just below the one Freemasons are using. And then I've gotten with all the neighbors. No one has contested it. They've all, once I've shown them the plans, been okay with what's going on there. We have a few speakers tonight who are going to speak in favor of it that are our neighbors. Mr. Ronald Peyton up there said, you know, you guys have talked about how it's tough to get in and out of the building due to the blind spot in the cars. He stated that he would have no issues moving his vehicles off of the roadway during our business hours so that that isn't a blind spot anymore. I think that's really all I have to add for what you guys discussed last week or last month. Do you guys have any other questions?
What, I know you discussed this on the tour, but what are you anticipating the hours?
The hours are going to be about 12 to 5 is what I'm thinking, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Very limited, nothing too crazy, maybe by appointment only during the week if I'm in there.
Do you want to mention the letter from ABC Consulting?
So there is a letter that is a company I've partnered with. Kevin Anderson is the vice president of that, and he was a special agent with the Virginia ABC. Their company specializes in keeping everyone compliant with the laws, making sure we understand those laws, and then training all the employees to follow those laws as well.
Gave us quite a bit of information.
It is a long letter. Are you guys going to read it, or I'll happily read it?
Given it in advance?
Pardon?
We were given it yesterday, right?
Yes, yes, we've had it to get, yes.
Essentially just states what a distillery is, that we're trying to manufacture, to sell to the ABC stores in other states. But in order to do that, we need a tasting room on premises because it's very tough to get into these ABC stores and these other places. Plus, it allows for people to come and spend money actually in the establishment. But with that, we can only serve a maximum of three fluid ounces. So we need to reinforce that this isn't a bar, it's not a nightclub, they're not going to have any loud noises, rock bands, loudspeakers blaring music. 12 to 5, people will come, they can sample the product, and then they can hopefully buy a bottle if they like it. But they can't drink it on the premises, they have to leave, and you can't hang out all day like you can at the breweries or the winery, convenience store, anywhere else that sells alcohol.
So who monitors that? I mean, how is that monitored to make sure people aren't just hanging around?
So the people that are in there, whoever's working that day, should it be me? Or is to, we have to serve by the law. The Virginia ABC also does random pop-in inspections fairly regularly, and they would love to take your permits.
What would be the maximum capacity? Has that been established yet?
It has not been established. I have not gone and met with Mr. Campbell yet about the maximum occupancy. When we talked a few months ago, he was stating around 30-ish.
Do you anticipate having any food at all, or do?
To-go snacks, like bags of chips, things like that, but actually having a kitchen and making food, no. That's not the route I'm trying to go.
What's the product you will serve out of there?
What is the product? Whiskey, gin, vodka, and rum. So hopefully those four spirits. Hopefully be able to source as much of that as I can locally. A lot of it's corn and potato-based, which we can get from our farmers. And then after it's distilled, we can also give them back the mash so they can feed their animals. As for the rum, that's molasses-based, so I unfortunately can't get that around here unless you guys know of anybody that's got some trees for that.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
I should have mentioned that we do have the application in our packet. We have the property tax map info. We have the aerial digital layout of West Main Street and a drawing of the proposed building with the different areas that would be used in this building, 622. And a copy of the advertisement where this was advertised in Page News for two weeks, as required.
I was just going to say the site visit was very informative.
Okay, I will officially open the public hearing. And we have speakers that are signed up. When you go to speak, I'd ask that you please come down to the podium up here. That way we can all hear you better. And please give us your name and address. So, Ronald Peyton.
Good evening. My name is Ronald Peyton, and my address is 620 West Main Street in Luray. So, yeah, like he said, I'm right next door to him, and we had good conversations every time he came. And when he asked me about it, I told him I'm on board. You know, I think it'll help the community out to try to bring business where we can have more money in Page County. And like I told him, when the issue came up about blind spots, of course, when it used to be Melvin Tut's shop, we worked with him too about when he's open or people had to back out, we'd move our cars till he closes. That's not a problem. I think they're nice. And y'all said something about who will keep, I think you said about who will keep, you know, things under control, you know, nine times out of ten, I'm home anyway, so if man have a problem, you know, it's like, you can, y'all can lead the easiest way, the hard way, and the hard way is the police. So, but I'm definitely on board with them, and anything I can do, I'd be willing to help them.
Thank you. Anything else?
Is that right, are you right next door to them, in 620?
Yep, yes, yes, ma'am. It's the one with all the crystal lights. So the green one, so, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, Audrey?
Good evening, everyone. I spoke with Mr. Conrad and his wife when they first came to me about starting this business. And I told them that I would go the direction of the community, that I'd talk to the community within the vicinity. And if, as a majority, they were for the business, then I would be for it. And if, as a majority, that they were against it, then I would be against it. From that time, I endeavored to survey the west side of Luray. It's about 53 people that live between the school board area and the Bixers Ferry area, which would be affected by this new business. And overwhelmingly, as a majority, not as a whole, there are a few that were opposed, but as a whole, they were for, or at least not opposed to, this business coming in. One of the big factors was, you know, when you hear brewery or distillery, you think, God, it's going to be a whole lot of drunk people, you know, at night partying. And so what I did from there is, we hosted a community event at the rec center. I'm Andre King, I think I missed that. I'm Andre King, and the property that I represent, the 630 West Main Street that I own, is the Luray, West Luray Recreation Center, which is two doors up the street from where this property is. And I also am the executive director of Living Legacy, which owns the adjoining field that partners or neighbors to the rear of the property. And I'm also going to be at a similar public hearing in a few months as I am proposing or asking the town to give to the recreation center that little square that's behind. So I'm going to be asking them to come and do the same navel-y support to me when I get there. But the reason, I guess my reason for not opposing, among the many, hearing that, you know, people aren't going to be getting drunk, they're only going to be having three ounces of alcohol, they've secured parking, and that they're working with the community to answer all questions, is the fact that one day, I hope, that the west side of Luray, in particular, West Main Street, will be able to extend the downtown initiative to that area. But in order to extend the downtown initiative, we need businesses. We need a reason to attract tourists and people from Luray to come to our beautiful side of town. And historically, a lot of people don't know, the west side of town has been known for many prosperous businesses. The Midway Restaurant, Tut's Tavern, Tut's Auto, upholstery Stops, the Purple Pet Palace, barber shops, the Civic Center, Gold Star, which is now Tony's Auto, Wayne's Detail, and many others. And so with that, I'm hoping that the west side of Luray can become a strong contributor to the thriving downtown area, which is Luray, what now is and is to become. But in order to do that, I think we have to work with local businesses. So I can't say that everyone is for. I do know, as an overwhelming majority, there are very few that are opposed. And I'm looking forward to working with them as our neighbors, as the recreation center, as a business owner, and as a local of this side of town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question of Audrey?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you happen to, did you talk to your board?
I did, and the board is not opposed. They, Mr. Conrad Koby and his wife, they've met with our board, our chairman, the whole board of directors, and explained exactly what they're going to be doing. As a nonprofit, we have no opposition.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all so much.
Thank you. Okay, we do have several other emails that I believe we received.
Yes, sir, you've received three emails that are not, are opposed to the distillery from Melvin Tut, Sylvia Jeffries, and Sonia Bailey. And you have received two emails that are supportive of the application from Kayla Wallace and Tyler Weaver.
Did you mention the one, too, from Audrey Tut Smith?
I was informed by Mr. King prior to the move, to this meeting, that Ms. Smith had rescinded her objection.
Okay, okay, I just wondered, because we had that, we had that piece of paper. Those were the ones that we had signed up for the public hearing. But if there are others, we're open to other comments. Now hearing anybody, I'll officially close the public hearing. Comments, discussion with the Planning Commission members?
I think what, one of the things that Audrey was talking about, and I was sitting here thinking, you know, it is downtown Luray has done a great job. East End and West End, not as much. And so I sit and I think about this, what can we do to help that, particularly on the West End? As some of it has moved out to the East End, but it's still, everything is centered downtown, so it would be nice to see opportunities extended. It's just kind of a thought I was having as he was talking.
And this could be, could be the one thing that could start?
The impetus for it, yes.
Other?
My concerns were alleviated with the site visit we had. Had major concerns. You've got parking situation resolved, it seems, and you know, this is not a bar. And distilleries are becoming a major part of tourism in Virginia. Virginia Tourism Corporation is paying a lot of attention, you know, spotting these places. There are 300 wineries. I can't remember the number of distilleries. I think it's like 30 to 40.
Seventy-four now.
Seventy-four, I'm way off. But it's a tourism product. And I was also impressed that, you know, they engaged a company whose former employees of Virginia that are shepherding them through this process, and that's not a, probably wasn't a small cost, to have their advice to make sure you're crossing, dotting the i's and crossing the t's. I just think they've done everything in a proper fashion, and I think it would be an asset to the tourism component of the community as well as the residents.
I think we learned that this may, if it comes about, well, it may be the most regulated business in the town of Luray. Not that restaurants and brewery, not that they don't have regulations, and the car dealerships or the pharmacies or whoever's here, they all have regulations. But it sounds like with the federal oversight and the state ABC, that it's probably, if not the most regulated business, it's probably one of the most regulated businesses that's going to be here. Other questions, discussion? Okay, if not, are we ready for a motion?
I move that the Planning Commission recommend the town council to approve the special use permit to operate artisan manufacturing distillery at 622 West Main Street as presented.
Support.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Ms. Noah.
Yes.
Mr. Huffman.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaword.
Yes.
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
Ms. Dixon.
Yes.
And Mr. Good.
Yes.
You did your homework.
Thank you very much.
I can say that as a former teacher.
Let's paint that front of that building.
Okay, our second special use permit. Second special use permit application is to operate a lodging house at 22 North DeFord. And we have the tax map number. The properties owned are R5, which does allow for townhouses and apartment apartments. We have the definition of a lodging house. We have the recommended conditions. And I believe these would be standard for any lodging house. Occupancy of no more than six guests. Off-street parking is required for guest vehicles. There can be one identification sign, not exceeding four square feet. Meals, if there are any provided, should be served only to guests that are renting the bedrooms. And of course, the owner would need to obtain the town business license, collect the transient occupancy tax and the meals tax, if any, and turn those into the town. And again, we have the application, the tax map info, the photo showing the location of the property. I believe in the application, it says that there are other R5 properties on this street. And it's either R5, or B1, or M1. And the property would not be altered to accommodate use as a lodging house. Any other information we need, Steve, except we lost our?
We've lost our projector. Mr. Rowland, the applicant, is here. If you would like to invite him to speak.
Anything else we need to know?
No, sir. We've received no email comments prior to this meeting.
Just a little history about me. I'm the owner of the Main View Bed and Breakfast on Mechanic Street. Thank you. My name is Bryce Rowland. I'm the owner of the Main View Bed and Breakfast on Mechanic Street. And the property, I've just purchased this property in December. It's a two-unit property that's been recently renovated by the prior owners. What I have found, being a lodging owner, is that Luray suffers greatly from having lodging space, especially during the weekends. Especially in the last couple of years, COVID's changed the way that people travel. So I could have sold out my property four or five times over on a Friday, Saturday night. Unfortunately, there's nothing ever available, so I'm sending them over the mountain to go somewhere else. The average person spends two to three times what they, in town, or in activities, what they spend for lodging each night. So if they spend $200 for lodging, they're going to spend between $400 and $600 locally on different tourist activities. So with it being where it is, there are, I think, one, two, five or six R5 buildings around it. Across the street is B1. At the end of the street is Main Street, and that's all B1. And behind it is M4, which is Southern States. Any questions, Ronnie? Thank you so much.
Any discussion that we need? All right, I do need to officially open the public hearing. And we did not have anybody signed up to speak. But again, if anybody wants to, we will. Don't hear anybody, so I'll close the public hearing. Are we ready for a motion?
I would move the Planning Commission recommend the town council approve the special use permit to operate a lodging house of 22 North Deford Avenue with the conditions identified as presented.
Second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Seaword.
Yes.
Mr. Huffman.
Yes.
Ms. Noah.
Yes.
And Mr. Good.
Yes.
Okay, the last of the public hearings is a code change consideration. The town council, at their meeting in February, adopted an amendment to change the addressing of streets to more closely align with that of the county's code. And there's one section, town council referred a code amendment which deals with subdivisions, Appendix B subdivisions, section 402.8. This, they ask us to review and consider this part of the change, since it deals with streets and subdivisions. And the section there in question just says, "All proposed streets shall be named in accordance with Chapter 74", which is what the town council adopted, as amended. Any questions or anything else we need on this, Steve?
No, sir.
Again, I don't have anybody signed up to speak, but we do need to officially open the public hearing. And I don't hear anybody, so we'll close that. Are we ready for amendment or motion?
Sir, I will move the Planning Commission recommend the Town Council approve the code amendments to Chapter 74, Article 4, Section 402.8, street names of Appendix B subdivisions in the town as presented.
Second. Can we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Seaword?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Ms. Noack?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
And Mr. Good?
Yes.
Okay, those are the three matters for public hearing and action that we had for this evening. Are there updates that we need to have?
Well, Brian and I have been working with D.R. Horton and Baker Development. Twenty-eight zoning permits for new townhomes in the Luray Landing subdivision have been issued this week, with another four pending. We understand that construction of those townhomes should begin within the next few weeks. The installation of the new Imagination Station playground equipment at Dean Park has begun. We anticipate that work to be complete by the end of this month, if not the first week of April. Brian can provide a little more information about the Roundabout and Memorial Drive projects.
Memorial Drive, that corridor improvement project will go out to bid likely this Friday. We'll see what construction costs will be. Mr. Schaefer happened to be here. Several of you were here the other night when I delivered my doom and gloom message to the Town Council.
Don't do that again.
Don't do it again.
Price is the pain, what it'll be, but we'll advertise and see. The Roundabout, we have awarded that to a local contractor, General Exhibition out of Horton. They're based locally here. The owners are here locally. They, we are scheduled to have a pre-construction conference, the 29th of this month via Zoom, and then they're looking to get started construction somewhere around mid of April, if, as soon as they get a signed contract from Central Office of the Region. So we'll see how that particular project unfolds.
What's the scope of that project, please?
As far as Memorial Drive? Yeah. So taking off from where we stopped with the intersection, the plan is to improve road geometry, width reconstruction, better drainage. There will be a sidewalk, curb, and gutter continuing along the southeast side of that all the way up past the rescue squad, up to the hospital's lower parking lot, connecting there with Valley Health. We're going to go ahead and put in vaults and conduits for streetlights, ground mount streetlights up through that side, and then kind of shorten and remove a lot of material at the enormous Mont View intersection. I don't know why, if you've ever noticed that or not, but it has to be the largest paved intersection in the entire town. We don't need all that asphalt, so we're going to reconfigure that, reorient that to make that a safer view. We get a lot of California rolls coming down that hill and going out through the corner, and that's not real safe. So we're going to reconfigure that, take care of stormwater all the way up around to Court Lane intersection.
Is there coordination with the hospital's walking trail they're thinking about?
Yeah. The, at one point, the sidewalk, there will be a crosswalk also across Memorial Drive there at the Mont View, near the Mont View intersection. We have a few trees and bushes for visibility, but then the trail leaves, the sidewalk leaves the right of way and goes up through a hospital property, and then they're planning on hooking that into their trail, walking trail network. Coordination with the rescue squad and Valley Health will be paramount, and Mont View and Nursing Home will be paramount, obviously. The biggest issue is the mobile MRI, tractor-trailer that comes in every, I think it's Tuesday night, leaves every Wednesday night.
They're adding.
Are they?
They add, so there'd be two more days.
They're going to be, that's going to be the biggest thing to try to manage, is getting that monster in and out of there without, you know, falling in a tiger trap somewhere. So we dealt with it when we did the intersection. This will just be a little bit longer, so we'll see how that goes. But yeah, it basically corridor improvements all the way from Court Lane intersection to the Main Street intersection. So that'll be the, that'll be the scope of that.
And you said sidewalks?
Oh, sidewalk on the southeast side.
That'd be fantastic.
So we don't have people walking in the streets anymore.
Yeah.
If we just bring that road all the way through Mont View, all the way back to Jordan Street, that would be a lot.
Right up to the end of Jordan and tie in right there, because there's a guy that lives on the end of Jordan Street.
Isn't that right, Frank? Yeah. Yeah, so.
Well, these two projects, it's not business development, like we were talking about earlier on West Main, but these are two projects that are going on, or will be going on on West Main, and improve a lot of that travel there, going to the hospital, Mont View and so on. Anything else?
State of good repair payment, and I'll mention that, Mr. Chairman. We were approved for two more segments of East Main Street and West Main Street for primary extension paving. Those are supposed to go out to the bids set by the state, the April 27th set of bids, I think. If they're approved and we get a bidder and our scope meets the pricing that was, the funding that was allowed by the state, that will be essentially from Jordan Street all the way to US 211, past Leeksville, or ties in. We may skip a few sections, like where the Roundabout's going to be placed, and then where we pave from Leeksville Road out to 211 there within the last couple of years, we may skip a few of those sections. The other section is the largest. It's from right up here at the railroad tracks, all the way to Painter Street. Both lanes, full width, mill and pave, all the way out. And remark, so if those get approved and we're able to afford those full sections, that will be a significant amount of paving work. Of course, it always happens right in the middle of summer, and nobody wants it to happen, but that's when paving season is, so we have to take a little bad precaution.
Notice that section from Leeksville Road out to the bypass has really gotten rough, I guess with the tractor trailers.
Yeah.
That one's just done.
It has. Unfortunately, we get more tractor-trailer traffic than we're supposed to, because we have an ordinance in place, but.
They're not supposed to go that way, right?
No, they're not supposed to go that way. And actually, when that Roundabout, that Roundabout project is three pieces. The Roundabout itself, the improvements to Northcott Drive, which include the left turn lane, if you guys remember that, out at the light, and then the last piece, the piece that's really going to jerk some chains locally, is the left turn at the end of Main Street going toward Walmart will be eliminated. That whole intersection is being redesigned by the state. In fact, they're going to go out in the middle of 211 and rip up that crossover and the turn lanes out there, take all of that out. Lots of accidents there, lots of problems there over the years, and so they're looking to try to get rid of that particular issue when they do that job.
And the state is redesigning it?
Yeah.
Not Brian?
No. No, I had a different answer to that area of town, but, you know, I just build them the way you guys give them to me. So that one's going to be redone by them, and that'll be the last piece. That's going to be the most unpopular piece of that project for the people that have historically gone out there and gone left to go to McDonald's or whatever.
Certainly going to be safer. I mean, when you pull out there, you're.
That's correct.
You're slowing down. People are coming through the traffic light at the caverns at 55 miles an hour.
Yeah.
Well, we typically have.
Almost have to.
Right, we have three or four cars that stack out in that, that go out there in no man's land and kind of hang out until they can turn left. So the enhanced turn lane, the additional turn lane at Northcott at the light, and then the existing lane will be designed to handle that traffic. I have my concerns about the number of daily trips there, but Stanton Traffic Section says that it's big enough to handle that, so based on traffic patterns.
It would never back up to Main Street?
It potentially could.
Could, yeah.
Yeah, so the turn lane's going to start just at the top of the hill where the cemetery is and go all the way to the light. So there will be significant stacking capability there. I guess we'll have to wait and see. Again, I expressed my concerns multiple times to the Design District in Stanton, and I guess, you know, we'll see how it works out. But yeah, I share your concerns, Bill. There may be some issues there, but yeah, that, while it may be the most, the safer decision, Mr. Schaefer, it will certainly not be the most popular decision that gets made on that concern.
Well, that left turn lane might start a little sooner, but I guess you've got to navigate to the left once you go through the Roundabout.
We have to allow a certain number of linear feet between the Roundabout engagement and disengagement lanes and the other. It will be a single-lane Roundabout. It will not have rubbing is racing in the two-lane deal going around in circles. So like Front Row did, they learned their mistake there, so we'll see.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Just one comment, that that report that we do each year on the zoning permits and all, it's going to have a spike. This time with the 28 townhomes that are permitted as of now, and four more pending, and are there more beyond that?
There are. It's our understanding that the initial number of lots that D.R. Horton is planning to construct on is 44. But, and then there are, I believe, another 120 to 130 lots beyond that that they would need to work out with Baker, so. And it's our understanding that D.R. Horton is anticipating constructing 10 units per month.
That's significant.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And the apartments at the airport, of course, they've been permitted for some time, but the certificates of occupancy, they're going to show a spike in those, Steve?
Yes, sir. There's been, not necessarily a delay, but it's due to some issues associated with COVID and those, that type of issue. Work has slowed. It has not stalled, but it has slowed, so we're still hoping for a July availability, but we will see.
Is there other land out there that could be used for commercial development?
Along General Drive, there are, I believe, another five lots that are undeveloped. Might be more than that. I think it's five.
Five or six that are available on General Drive.
Yeah. The majority, the remainder of the property out there between West Loop subdivision and Walmart has been zoned PND for residential development. Not to say that it couldn't be rezoned after that, but as it stands right now, we have five lots of along General Drive.
Lots of things going on.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the only other comments I have is that I believe our April meeting's on April And one other thing, we want to add our best wishes to Mr. Schaefer, as he has retired from the caverns. He was recognized Monday night at the Town Council meeting for his 50 years, and not just representing Luray Caverns, but representing us all over the place, our town and our community. Probably, I know, all over the country, and probably in Europe also.
It was very unexpected and very meaningful to come from the town, and so nice to see the Planning Commission there. Got a very nice message from Tracy, even as she could.
We do have a card for you, too.
There's no money in here.
But it's a very nice card. Okay, if there's nothing else, we have completed our agenda. Thank you all very much. Back in April. June.